Time hasn't arrived. I call the City Council meeting for Monday, May 26, 2015. To order, please stand as we salute our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all. Good evening, councilors, and good evening to everyone that is here as well. Counselor Sullivan? Uh, excuse me. Counselor Denaply.
Thank you, Mr. President. A moment of personal privilege?
Yes, you may, counselor.
Uh, over the weekend, we lost a great Brocktonian. His name was Roger Perrin. Everybody knows his Pitt Perrin. He was a boxer trainer. He was a friend of mine, colleague at the radio station. We used to do the sports show on Friday nights with the Marciano family. I'd like to have a moment of silence.
Thank you. May he rest in peace. Counselor Sullivan.
But if we could take a moment of silence, the city also lost a 35-year employee of the Brockton Public School Systems, Marilyn Cantfield, who was employed at the Whitman School. She was actually my fourth-grade teacher. She was just a really nice lady. She passed away. If we could remember her and her family, be appropriate. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, counselor. May she rest in peace as well.
Mr. President.
Counselor Sullivan.
I'm going to make a motion to accept a late file relative to the Fire Department.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded that we accept the late file. All in favor? Opposed? We accept the late file.
President.
Counselor Sullivan.
Can we make a motion to act on the suspension of rules and make a final vote tonight on this matter?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded that we act on this as well. After the clerk reads the names, we'll suspend the rules and act on it this evening. Go ahead, Mr. Clerk.
The appointment of Robert D. Hendrigan to the rank of Fire Captain of the Brockton Fire Department. The appointment of Eric J. Nardelli to the rank of Fire Lieutenant in the Brockton Fire Department. The appointment of Joseph M. Machetti to the rank of Deputy Fire Chief in the Brockton Fire Department.
Motion was made and seconded that we suspend the rules and act on this this evening. All in favor? Opposed? Confirmation by a roll call vote? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Denaply.
Yes.
Aineiri.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Sedinsky.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative.
Mr. President. The motion has been adopted. Counselor Sullivan.
I'm going to make a motion of reconsideration in hopes it does not prevail.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded for reconsideration in hopes it does not prevail. All in favor of reconsideration? All opposed? Reconsideration fails. Those three gentlemen, if they are here, and I'm sure they are, please stand up so we can see who. May we congratulate you and wish you the very best in your new position. At this time, we'll take about a three-minute recess so families and everybody can gather for some pitches. I reconvene the City Council meeting for Monday, May 26. Mr. Clerk, first item.
Petition to 660 Pleasant Street LLC DBA Premier Farm for an increase of 8,000 gallons to underground storage license located at 660 Pleasant Street and City Clerk's office, April 10, 2015. Hearing is signed for May 26, 2015, at 8:00 p.m.
Time hasn't arrived. I declare the hearing open. If there's anyone here in favor of the petition, please come forward and state your name and address to the clerk.
Good evening. Yep, right there. Janish Patel. And, uh, Janish Patel, and my father owns the site, our family owns the site, at 660 Pleasant Street. And what we're trying to basically do is, we had a license for 30,000 gallons before we took over. The site had a license, and then when we took over, when we got licenses in our name, we were only issued a 20,000 license. Now, we're just trying to get back to that 30,000 limit, just add an 8,000-gallon tank to hold diesel at the site.
Okay. Very good. Is there anyone else here that wants to be heard as well? In favor, please come forward and state your name and address to the clerk.
Good evening. Kevin Gottwald with Global Contracting, representing Patel with respect to the installation. I permitted it through the Fire Department. They've reviewed the plans and approved the plans, and I think that's why it's before you folks right now. Again, as Mr. Patel had said, when they took ownership of the property, it was at, or I guess maybe right when they purchased it, there was only 20,000 in the ground. So at that point, the permit, or the license to store was reduced to 20,000. The Patels were kind of unaware of it. At that point, we, they decided to install an 8,000 so that they can have diesel, have more regular buy-in volume, less trucks coming into deliveries. At that point, when I went to pull the permit, I realized that it had been reduced. And so since then, we've come before the board to try to increase it, to get it back to 30,000 or 28,000 so that they can increase, they can put the 8,000 in and have diesel at the location.
Okay. Very good. Anyone else, anyone else that's in favor of, please come forward and state your name and address to the clerk. Seeing none, I declare that part of the hearing closed. Counselor Cruz.
Well, I just had a question or two for either Mr. Patel or, I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't catch the second gentleman's name.
Kevin Gottwald, Global Contracting.
So did you actually have a permit in hand for 30,000 gallons?
Uh, the license to store in 2012 and '13, that's as far as the city had on record, was for 30,000 gallons, correct. In 2014, again, the clerk approached Mr., because it's renewable every single year. So one of the clerks, you know, approached Mr. Patel and said, um, you know, "You only have 20,000. What, you know, why don't you just reduce it?" Not knowing any better, he reduced it.
Okay. And so where will this tank physically be located on? Is it one 8,000-gallon tank? Is that how that works?
It's one 8,000-gallon tank. It'll be, uh, well, I don't have the site plan in front of me, but directly, it would be right to the left of the tanks. And it, like I said, at one time, there was that many tanks in there. Um, so we're just putting the tank back.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Is there anyone here in opposition to this petition? Please come forward and state your name and address to the clerk. Seeing none, I declare that part of the hearing closed. And the hearing closed, the question would be on granting.
Mr. President.
Counselor Stewart.
Just a point of information, I guess. I'm trying to figure out exactly where is 660 Pleasant Street. What business is this?
660.
660 Pleasant is, uh, it's right at the end of Westgate. If you went by the plaza or on your left heading, I guess, this direction, you don't drive straight into it. Uh, it's the old Cumberland Farms.
Oh, okay.
De Angelos on one corner, there on the other corner, and then, uh, you know, the entrance to the mall is where they reconfigure that whole intersection.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome, counselor. Again, the question is on granting by a hand vote. All in favor? Opposed? The license has been granted. Thank you.
We have the report of the Finance Committee for its meeting of January, I'm sorry, meeting of May 19, 2015.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the DPW Commissioner requesting a transfer of $20,000 from fiscal 2015 DPW Utilities Division Sewer Section Full-Time Account to DPW Utilities Division Sewer Section Overtime Account.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Emergency Management Director requesting that the City Council accept the grant award any amount of $2,210 from the HMEP Fiscal 14-Fiscal 15 Grant Supplement Funding.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the city planner requesting the City Council accept the grant award any amount of $10,000 from Mass Humanities to City of Brockton Frederick Douglas Neighborhood Association.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have an ordinance permitting Chapter 2 of the advised ordinances of the City of Brockton be ordained by the City Council of the City of Brockton as follows. Chapter 2, Article 3, Division 5, Section 2-186 Assistant City Solicitor, and the recommendation is favorable as amended.
The question is on ordination as amended by a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Denaply.
Yes.
Aineiri.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Sedinsky.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative.
And the ordinance is ordained.
We don't want to do any of that. Order that the city appropriate the amount of $2,75,919 for the purpose of paying costs of complete replacement of school windows at the Barrett Russell Kidney Garden.
The question is on adoption by a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Denaply.
Yes.
Aineiri.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Sedinsky.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative.
And the order is adopted.
Order that the city appropriate the amount of $3,599,486 for the purpose of paying costs of roof repairs and resurfacing, refacing boiler replacement at the Ashfield Middle School.
The question is on adoption by a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Denaply.
Yes.
Aineiri.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Sedinsky.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative.
And the order is adopted.
Order that the city appropriate the amount of $3,861,778 for the purpose of paying costs of roof repairs and resurfacing, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto at the Brookfield Elementary School.
Questions on adoption by a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Denaply.
Yes.
Aineiri.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Sedinsky.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative.
The order is adopted. Counselor Denaply.
Yes, Mr. President. Would like to take items 17 through 25 collectively, please.
Items 17 through 25, collecting motions made and seconded. All in favor? Opposed? We'll take them collectively. Mr. Clerk, just read each name, please.
Following appointments to the rank of Police Officer in the Brockton Police Department have a favorable recommendation. Joe Miranda, Jonathan Correa, Evan Joseph, Frank Kalankas, David Lou, Isaiah Callahan, Ryan Quirk, Jose Rodriguez, and Derek Scully.
Questions on confirmation by a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Denaply.
Yes.
Aineiri.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Sedinsky.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative.
And those appointments have been confirmed. Counselor Denaply.
Move for reconsideration in hopes it doesn't prevail on items 17 through 25.
Motion's been made and seconded for reconsideration in hopes it does not prevail. All in favor of reconsideration? All opposed? Reconsideration fails.
Appointment of Robert Miller, 81 Lester Road, Brockton, as a member of the Cable Advisory Board, three-year term ending May 2018. Recommendation is favorable.
The question is on confirmation by a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Denaply.
Yes.
Aineiri.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Sedinsky.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative.
And the appointment is confirmed.
Appointment of Mozart Saint Sielle, 104 Trebek Street, Brockton, as a member of the Cable Advisory Board for three-year term ending May 2018. Recommendation is favorable.
The question is on confirmation by a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Denaply.
Yes.
Aineiri.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Sedinsky.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative.
And the appointment is confirmed.
We have a transfer of $9,521 from Veterans Services Purchase of Services, $8,321. Veterans Services Overtime, $1,200. The Veterans Services Goods and Supplies, Council May 11, 2015. Refer the Committee on Finance. That report is favorable.
The question is on adoption by a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Denaply.
Yes.
Aineiri.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Sedinsky.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
Transfer of $200,000 from Personnel Department, Personnel Employee Benefits, Unemployment Compensation to Police Department Capital Projects, and Council May 11, 2015. Refer the Committee on Finance. That report is favorable.
The question is on adoption by a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Denaply.
Yes.
Aineiri.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Sedinsky.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
Transfer of $17,200 from Park and Authority Personal Services, Part-Time Salaries Other Than Overtime, to Park and Authority Purchase of Services, Electricity, and Council May 11, 2015. Refer the Committee on Finance. That report is favorable.
The question is on adoption by a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Denaply.
Yes.
Aineiri.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Sedinsky.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
Transfer of $17,200 from Park and Authority Meter Reserve, $7,200. Personal Services Part-Time Salaries Other Than Overtime, $10,000. To Park and Authority Snow Removal, $17,200. And Council May 11, 2015. Refer the Committee on Finance. That report is favorable.
The question is on adoption by a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Denaply.
Yes.
Aineiri.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Sedinsky.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
An appropriation of $2,25,724 from available funds Brockton's Chapter 90, portionment for fiscal 2016, to Highway Transportation Project Funds, fiscal 16, Chapter 90 Projects, and Council May 11, 2015. Refer the Committee on Finance. That report is favorable.
The question is on adoption by a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Denaply.
Yes.
Aineiri.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Sedinsky.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
Order that the City Council authorizes the acceptance of two memorial benches for the DPW Golf Course from DW Field Park Association to City of Brockton Park Commission. All costs associated with this memorial bench, including installation, would be incurred by DW Field Park Association, and Council May 11, 2015. Refer the Committee on Finance. That report is favorable.
Questions on adoption by a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Denaply.
Yes.
Aineiri.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Sedinsky.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
Order that the City Council authorizes the acceptance of a memorial bench for the DW Field Golf Course from Dave Monahan to City of Brockton Park Commission. All costs associated with this memorial bench, including installation, would be incurred by Dave Monahan, and Council May 11, 2015. Refer the Committee on Finance. That report is favorable.
Questions on adoption by a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Denaply.
Yes.
Aineiri.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Sedinsky.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
An ordinance permitting Chapter 17 of the advised ordinances, City of Brockton be ordained by the City Council, City of Brockton as follows. Chapter 17, Article 2, Planning Board, Division 1, Generalists, Section 17-18, Members.
Refer to ordinance.
Order that the City Council of the City of Brockton act in pursuit of Chapter 40-Q of the Mass General Laws, hereby approves the downtown Brockton district, designates the City of Brockton Planning and Economic Department, directs the City of Brockton Assessing Department, and authorizes the Planning Department to take any other action in connection with the approval of the district.
Refer to finance.
Order that the city hereby accepts and expends the grant award any amount of $10,000 from Mass Humanities to City of Brockton in support of stride towards freedom to get a connect to Brockton's diversity by exploiting our common ground. The grant is to be matched by at least $2,000 in cash and $9,900 in kind services. The mayor is authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate such grant.
Refer to finance. Counselor Cruz.
Mr. President, due to the lateness in the fiscal year, I'd like to make a motion that we act on item number 40 tonight on the suspension of the rules.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded that we take item number 40 and act upon it under the suspension of the rules this evening. All in favor? Opposed? And if anyone has any question relative to it, I would allow a leeway for either or Mr. Condon and our DPW Commissioner to make a quick presentation in regards to this matter. Good evening.
Good evening, councilors. This shortfall was due to the snow that we, that we had this winter.
Clerk didn't read yet. Excuse me.
A transfer of $20,000.
He has to read.
From the DPW Sewer Department Personal Services Other Than Overtime to DPW Sewer Department Personal Services Overtime to ensure that the Sewer Department has enough funds to cover any emergencies that may occur outside of their regular shifts.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Commissioner, now you may begin.
Okay. The reason for this shortfall is because of the snow we've had this winter. Usually I have two guys do plug-ups or whatever. I had to have a whole crew there because it was like four to six feet of snow on top of the cleanouts and, um, and then I had, with the blizzards I had around the clock, guys, I held them over. So that's why there's a little shortfall here. I still have money in the budget, but I want to make sure I have enough to get us through to the end of the year.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded that we approve. All in favor? Opposed? That has been approved. Question? Okay, it has to be on a roll call. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Denaply.
Yes.
Aineiri.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Sedinsky.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
Mister President.
I'd like to take items 17 through 25 collectively, please.
Item 17 through 25, collecting motions made and seconded. All in favor? Opposed? Mr. Clerk?
Following appointments to the rank of Police Officer in the Brockton Police Department have a favorable recommendation. Joe Miranda, Jonathan Correa, Evan Joseph, Frank Kalankas, David Lou, Isaiah Callahan, Ryan Quirk, Jose Rodriguez, and Derek Scully.
Questions on confirmation by a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Denaply.
Yes.
Aineiri.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Sedinsky.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative.
And the appointment is confirmed.
Appointment of Mozart Saint Sielle, 104 Trebek Street, Brockton, as a member of the Cable Advisory Board for three-year term ending May 2018. Recommendation is favorable.
The question is on confirmation by a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Denaply.
Yes.
Aineiri.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Sedinsky.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative.
And the appointment is confirmed.
Appointment of Mozart Saint Sielle, 104 Trebek Street, Brockton, as a member of the Cable Advisory Board for three-year term ending May 2018. Recommendation is favorable.
The question is on confirmation by a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Denaply.
Yes.
Aineiri.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Sedinsky.
Yes.